2020, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. All right, let's see, we have no action items. We have one large informational item, which is the recommended budget for fiscal year 2022. And the reason it's so early is because we have, the county commissioners have agreed to move the St. Mary's County Public School System budget discussion more to the forefront of their budget cycle and
deliberations. Deliberations.
Deliberations and process. So therefore, they've asked us if that would be amenable to us, and we said yes, since we are the largest portion of their budget every year. So therefore, we will have everything completed and approved to them by, I believe, the end of January, so they have it during the start of their, the beginning of their budget work sessions. So that is the reason for the change, in case anyone was wondering. And with that, I will send it over to Scott.
So I'd like to start with just doing a little update, because it seems like whenever we get together, we should always start with just a little bit of a, a little bit of an informational review of where we are and why we are and what we're doing. For those outside of the system, and for those who perhaps aren't following on social media, we did send communication to all staff and to parents and students that we are going to remain virtual for the entire month of December. We had originally said we were going to review the data, and we were going to consider resuming in-person instruction next Monday, but obviously the data is such that that's, it's prohibited. So most recent data, as of yesterday, the state of Maryland has a positivity rate per 100,000 people of 34.44% and a statewide positivity rate of 7.33. Now, we don't use their data, we use our own data, and that data can be found, you can see the Maryland data, you can see the St. Mary's County data, and you can see the school system data, COVID information, on the, on our website, linked to our website, it was linked, I believe, in the letter that was sent home as well. And you can find it right from our homepage, www smcps.org. As of yesterday, we had a positivity rate by our local health, our local health department of 10.8% in St. Mary's County. That is the highest it has been since May. That means that one out of every 10 people that got tested was positive. We have a new case rate that is actually going down. It is down to 21.74 after reaching almost 30 cases per 100,000 in the middle of last week. Now, these numbers are going to change, and these numbers are probably going to go back up because we have, we had a lull in testing on Thursday and Friday due to Thanksgiving and Thanksgiving break, so the health department was closed in those two days. It's reopened, we also had an inclement weather day. Everything's reopened, people are getting tested, so we think that number is, will probably be increasing. We had a couple of days where the, the county reported over 50 cases in one of the last several days. So that puts us well on the wrong side, whoops, that puts us on the wrong side of the, of the, of the, of the graph. Let me move this over. We are double the, the percent, positive, percent positivity rate that we are supposed to be considering when we consider whether people are going to be in-person instruction, and we are substantially exceeding the 15 per 100,000 that the governor, the Governor Hogan put forth this metric. It is in consultation with the Maryland Department of Health and the Maryland State Department of Education. So our decisions are being driven by the decision matrix that was put forward for all of us to use in October of this school year, right before kids came back to school. Also to consider in St. Mary's County, one of the other measures that we do as we look at the entire week, what's the total for the entire week, and for the week that started 11/22 and ended 11/29, we had 262 new cases. With 262 new cases, recognize that the health department has a finite number of employees and even contracted employees to do the most important work of contact tracing, so we understand who they might have been exposed to and who needs to be quarantined and isolated. When we get to numbers like this, it really is just it's unchecked community spread. So treat everybody as though you assume that they have been exposed to somebody who have, who has COVID. They may very well have been. So masks on Maryland, as Governor Hogan has stated, that's pretty much where we need to be for the next several weeks. So again, our recovery planning page has all of that information. So the calendar for the month of December is all virtual. The fall, or winter sports that was slated to start December 7th, we're going to hold off, and we're not going to start until January. We're going to take this entire month to make sure that we have everything in place, that we are planning accordingly. As we are speaking right now, we have representatives on a conference call with the local health department and EMS to talk about the deployment of vaccine in St. Mary's County, as we believe we will have the first available vaccinations sometime in the third week of December, going into like around December 16th, 17th, 18th, something like that. Now, the first round of vaccine, Phase 1A, is really just going to be targeted towards healthcare workers, frontline workers, and if there's anything left over, getting into congregate care centers where the, where the population is the most at risk. That being said, we definitely see daylight at the end of the tunnel. There are many more vaccines ready to go behind that, and working with Dr. Brewster, the second phase of 1, Phase 1, 1B, will include school system staff. To start with, perhaps our nurses, if our nurses are involved with the vaccination plan, we've had a preliminary meeting with them, they would be the first vaccinated, and then moving out into all of our, our staff that's in the building and interacting with students. Please know, all of this is voluntary. There is, there will be no vaccination mandate from us locally. We will wait and see as this rolls out, what that, what it looks like at the state level or at the federal level. But what we do see is, we think that within the next several months, we're going to have vaccine available for frontline workers, first responders, and then teachers and educational staff. Because ultimately, we need to enter 2021 with hope in our hearts to recognize that this has been a tumultuous, catastrophic, stormy, stormy 2020, and 2021 will be when the sky's clear. And when the sky's clear, we need to get kids back in school, we need to get kids back in school, we need to get kids back in school, and we all, everybody absolutely knows that. So as soon as we feel that the risk is at a level that is acceptable, we're going to push forward. So January 4th, as soon as we come back from winter break, we anticipate rolling right back into those special programs, compass and sail, and getting those kids back into the, into the classroom. Assuming that that all goes well, then January 11th, we would bring Phase 2 kids, that's all of our pre-K K 1, 6, 9, and 12, back in for two weeks. And then by the last week of January, January 25th, we would have all of our kids who want to be back in school, back in school. I believe that that will also coincide throughout the month of January with vaccinations being made more widely available, particularly for school staff, and then once we get past school staff, making them available for the larger community. Dr. Mina is working on that plan right now, we're, we're part of all of that. I really do think that we're going to see our way to the other side of this. And it might take us until March, it might be March, it might be March before we get back to some semblance of, of consistent operation day to day, but we will get there. We know that we just have to hold on. We have to make good decisions, we have to be flexible, we have to lead with empathy, we need to recognize that every single day ends, and the next day comes, and when the next day comes, we have an opportunity to be the best version of ourselves, regardless of the version of ourselves that we were the previous day. We have been preaching this to everybody that we possibly can. And so December will be virtual, we will be making plans, we will be communicating with you, we will be working with all the kids who struggled in the first marking period to help them recover. We, the schools have already rolled out some edgenuity options for kids to go back to recover some credit to work through things asynchronously. Please know that any, any gap that we are creating, we will come back and we will fill. It will be, we will smooth everything out in 2020. So that's where we stand. I just wanted to put that out there. I know that we sent a letter out to parents yesterday and said that we'd give a little update. Some of the questions that we've had coming back are, well, are we ever going to get back in school? And the, the response is, we will. We will absolutely positively, everybody needs to plan on January being the first phase of, the first bit of getting back to, getting back to some normal. So we'll communicate more, we'll have more information when we get together in two weeks for the, for the official budget work session board meeting, but today I just wanted to start with all of that. So thank you very much for your indulgence on that. I am now going to, Ms. McCourt is on the line, correct?
Uh huh, yes.
Found a friend, all right, fantastic. So you're going to see that this presentation is very similar to the presentations we've had in the past. You know, we start with, you know, what, why we build a budget, how we build a budget, why we're, why, why does the county have to spend the bulk of its resources on education? Well, that's because we're very important. We are the future of, of this county, of this state, of this nation, of this world. So we are absolutely that. We start with the fact that we are committed to the future. We are committed absolutely to the future, and the future is absolutely our kids. We have 18,000 students now. I know that our actual enrollment said we had 16 something, something, something. I assure you, there are 18,000 kids who are out there, and I assure you that when school gets back in session and we have regular classes and their doors are open, we'll have 18,000 kids again, because nobody moved out of St. Mary's County. Nobody moved away. I do believe that we're going to see people who move to St. Mary's County as we see larger centers struggle, and people come back and they're living with their parents. So we're committed to the future. We have our five S's, students, staff, schools, stakeholders, and ultimately sustainability. They have remained constant, I think this is the seventh year. We know what our commitments are to each one of them, they are on our website, you can navigate through. If you drill down further, you'll find examples and metrics and data that's behind each one of them. When we build our budget, our first priority, our first priority always has to be people. We are a people-driven business. This is why we struggle so much in a pandemic, because we are socially isolated. We cannot spend time with one another, but we ultimately have to make that investment, our investment in people. So ISMAC and SMAS and contracted services, salary and wages for this proposed budget equal $162,692,614. That's only part of taking care of people. The other part of taking care of people, and why people go into education, is because you have benefits, healthcare and social security and retirement and workers' comp and ultimate fixed charges umbrella underneath that, that's over $54 million in this proposed budget. That means that of this proposed budget, $217 million is just invested in the people who do the work every single day on behalf of our kids. That's 93% of the budget. The rest of that budget then goes to other elements, so support for staff. What have we seen? We see that we need digital academic resources, so you're going to see within this budget a greater infusion of, of alternatives and options for kids, because we've certainly learned a great deal with online learning, that not every child takes a, takes a similar path. And so the more options that we have for kids, the more rich and abundant the resources, the better off that they do, and technology enhancements. If you, if you want to know what the cost of doing business is, you look for where it didn't go well. We spent the last three years building the back end of our technology system, heavily investing in security protocols and servers onsite and offsite, and building a robust networks in each one of our schools with Wi-Fi and all of this. If a school system didn't, they're very vulnerable. And read the Baltimore Sun and recognize how that vulnerability can be taken advantage of. It's a, it's a, it's an incredible challenge, and, and, you know, certainly when, when technology goes down now, education stops. So technology enhancements are incredibly important. And then the last is sustainability. You know, we have a negotiated four-year agreement with ISMAC and ISMAC ESPs for all of our, all of the people who deliver classroom instruction and all the people who support the delivery of classroom instruction. We had a really active negotiation last year, and they agreed to a four-year negotiated agreement. That's fantastic, that gives us stability. That means we know exactly how much that huge bulk of our budget is going to be, and on the employee side, the employee can, can know where they're going to be each year. They can budget, they can work out all of their, what's going on in their household, because they know that there is a negotiated and a confirmed agreement. The negotiated agreement for this year means that we are obligated as a school system to provide a step for all of our employees, and a 1.75, now it's called a cost of living increase, a COLA, but it really isn't. The 1.75 is a salary scale adjustment to better align with all the other neighboring counties in the state of Maryland. Our scale overall is slightly below our neighbors, and a 1.75 COLA or salary scale adjustment align, allows us to better align with our neighbors. And that's one of the things that we negotiated. We looked at each one of our neighbors and their salary scales, and we didn't, we were like, we're not, we weren't necessarily looking at what the overall COLAs were, and we were looking more of, how do we adjust the salary scale over time to align, recognizing we can't do what we've seen, perhaps, last year, we saw very large adjustments to salary scales with the county commissioners. They gave some people 17 to 20% an increase in their salary. Obviously, we can't do that, we must make small adjustments over time, and that's why we have a modest 1.75 COLA on top of the salary scale adjustment. Technology refresh, obviously, we've invested millions and, millions of dollars in the last several months to get to one-to-one computing, mobile computing for all of our children, and have that in a device-appropriate way. So some kids got tablets, and some kids got laptops, not Chromebooks, but genuine, because Chromebooks obviously have a vulnerability.
You think?
We got actual laptops that, 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 that need to be maintained. I'm going to go then digital resources. So 93% are people, 7% are utilities, transportation, textbooks, professional development, materials, technology, supplies, maintenance, program operations, and equipment. Our funding revenue, our revenue comes to us really from three major sources. The federal government, a small amount, the state government, usually half, and then local, usually half, and then a small portion that comes in through other revenue sources. The budget that we're proposing has a great many unknowns. We do not know whether the federal government is going to maintain the funding levels that they had previously. We don't know whether the state is going to fund us, do a, do a hold harmless and fund us at the same dollar level as last year, or whether they're going to go by PPA, maintenance of effort, because, as we talked yesterday with the county commissioners, we're 414 students fewer enrolled than last year. So we don't know where that 414 students equates to a little over $5 million worth of funding. We don't know whether that's going to be provided at the state level or at the county level, we don't know. And we hope that all of our elected officials and all those who handle money recognize that in the middle of a pandemic, you make sure that you fund what matters most. You don't cut money from your healthcare, and you don't cut money from your education. So, long story short, if we were just to look at last year's entire bottom-line budget, this year's budget that we're operating in right now, it's a $231 million budget. The proposed budget before you is $233 million. So it is only a $2 million increase in total over last year's adopted budget. The big difference is that this year's budget, to make this year's budget work, there is $6 million worth of St. Mary's County Public Schools' fund balance built into this operational budget. And we talked about that yesterday with the county commissioners, and I hope that, I hope we clarified the questions that they had. So our budget has $6 million worth of one-time fund balance, our fund balance money built in it to make it work. Those are not recurring funds, those are one-time costs, because we know we can't, you can't make recurring out of one-time costs. But if you just look at the total, 231 million this year, 233 million next year, $2 million change. When you take out that $6 million fund balance that we were using, and add that in, it's a $6 million change. Without that, without the fund balance being placed in, we had a $224 million budget. So we are $6 million over last year, so it's a 2.72% increase over the previous year. So with that, I am going to hand it off to Ms. McCourt to walk through the specifics and be available to answer any questions you might have at this large overview level. Ms. McCourt?
So are there any questions regarding the planned revenues in the superintendent's budget before I dive into the maintenance of effort calculation?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so we can go on to the next slide then? So it's important to note that what's being requested in this budget and local funding support is over the legally mandated maintenance of effort. The maintenance of effort calculation requires that the amount of funding that's provided per pupil in one fiscal year is maintained, no less than that amount in the next fiscal year. And if you recall, the current year's student enrollment determines next year's funding amount. So walking through what this would mean for St. Mary's County, the FY21 local funding amount of $109.5 billion is divided by last school year's September 30th student enrollment of 17,138 students, to arrive at a current year per pupil funding of $6,392. This per pupil funding amount is then multiplied by this school year's student enrollment as of September 30th of $16,724, to arrive at the legally mandated minimum funding requirement of maintenance of effort of $106.8 million, which would result in a decrease in required county funding of $2.6 million. However, there's been a lot of conversation, preliminary discussions about potential legislation to hold school districts harmless, and we had a brief conversation about that with county commissioners yesterday, where enrollment declines recognized due to the COVID pandemic. Should that happen, the whole harmless amount would be flat funded with fiscal year '21, or $109.5 million. And we are requesting $118.5 billion or a $9 million increase over the current year's budget. Next slide, please.
Now, before we, before we move off that slide, because that's obviously a pretty big number, that number is predicated on the state cutting our funding and not providing a home, hold harmless. If the state did hold harmless and added any extra funds, that would then be reduced from that $9 million. Correct?
That is correct. So the state funding that was provided on the slide before this, if you want to go back one slide, that is based on assuming a per pupil allocation in the state funding, which is based on the current funding protocolized status and law. So there's a $2.5 million decrease anticipated at this time based on existing law at the state level, going from the current funding from the state of $111 million down to $108.5 million.
So that's really important when we talk to our delegates and senators, that when they go up to Annapolis, they absolutely positively have to pass legislation to hold harmless. That would be at least $2.5 million that would then come back to us, as well as any additional money that they may have been afforded in Kerwin and things like that. All of that money would then be reduced, the number, the amount of money we'd be requesting from local resources.
And you made a point yesterday about the students who, who we've lost, and that it's easier for children at the elementary level, for parents to take care of their schooling. So of that 414 fewer students, 200 of those are kindergarten students.
Oh yeah, almost 400 of them are elementary, which means that they will come back next year.
Right.
So if we, if we're cut funding this year, we would have to cut positions for next year, and when those children come back, we will have class sizes that will be reflective of cutting 70-some positions.
Okay, thank you.
So Tammy, Ms. McCourt?
For the details of each individual category, however, as Dr. Smith stated, the increases are minimal. They're limited to adhering to the terms of the negotiated agreements, providing for the step increase, 1.75% COLA for staff, which you can clearly see from the largest increase being within the instructional salaries category, reflecting an increase there of $2.3 million. The decrease in the fixed charges is actually a result of a planned use of fund balance in FY21 to support the plan, but it was not included in the FY22 budget. And it's important to note that there are no new initiatives, there are no new positions in this budget, and all departments worked to reduce their budget, and in most cases, to the extent possible, by 10%. Next slide. So this slide reflects the recurring operating budget net of the planned use of fund balances in both FY21 and FY22. Drawing your eye to the fixed charges category as a result of backing out that planned use of fund balance, you can clearly see now that these recurring costs are indeed reflecting increases, specifically in health insurance, reflecting an overall bottom-line increase of $6.1 million in the total recurring operating budget. Next slide. So before we go through each category, I want to remind you that we have provided you with the Budget Binder, the infamous Budget Binder that we've been utilizing over the last several years, which contains all of the details by account of what makes up every component of this proposed budget. And for each category that we go through, we'll be focusing on the net change between FY21 and FY22, which will include any of the decreases that were proposed by the departments. So for example, the administration category has a total request of $3.6 million for an overall requested increase of $170,485 for a 4.8% increase. Now, that increase is 100% due to the highlight, and that is negotiating, meeting the negotiated agreement. However, it is offset by departmental increases of up to 10% that the departments have identified.
Increases, decreases?
Decreases, yes.
And then global administration category totals $17.6 million for FY22. That reflects an increase of $417,314 or a 2.4% increase, and that funding increase is supporting the negotiated agreement. The instructional salaries and wages category totals $85.7 million, reflecting an increase of $2.3 million or a 2.8% increase that funding supports the negotiated agreement. And also included in this category is an increase for the substitute teacher wage increases due to the minimum wage increase. And the details of that can be found in your binder under tab R. Next slide. The textbooks and instructional supplies category reflects $2.4 million for FY21. The textbooks and instructional supplies category reflects $2.4 million for FY '22 and that is net of fund balance. The requested increase net of the fund balance is $52,484 or a 2.2% increase. And that increase is going towards supporting elementary math consumables and instructional software. Also embedded in this category are a planned use of fund balance of $1.7 million to support continuation of school-based technology refresh of $1.2 million, specifically in the areas of network switches, network host refresh, interactive smart TVs for our classrooms, and teacher laptops. And we've also included digital textbook subscriptions in the amount of $469,000 in the subject areas of Spanish, American history, and US history. And all of the details of the use, the planning use of fund balance for FY '22 as it compares to FY '21 can be found in that supplemental binder as well under tab S. Other instructional costs total $1.5 million for FY '22. And this is actually a decrease of $108,25 or a 6.2% decrease. In particular, in the areas of conferences, mileage, non-public placements, and contract temporary services as identified by the departments. Special education, total budget of $19.6 million for FY '22, reflecting an increase of $169,067 or a 0.9% increase. And that funding will support the negotiated agreement. For student personnel services, we have a total budget for FY '22 of $1.4 million or a requested increase of $161,606 or 12.6% increase to support the negotiated agreement. For student health services, we have a total requested budget of $2.6 million for FY '22, a requested increase of $122,000 or a 4.8% increase to support the negotiated agreement. For student transportation, we have a requested budget of $18.6 million for FY '22. This request reflects an increase of $453,931 or a 2.5% increase, not only to support the negotiated agreement, but also to provide for the funding increase necessitated to support the contracted plus PBA increases, to support hourly contracted driver attendant rate increases equivalent to that being provided with a stepping fellow within the ISMAC ESP contract. And it also reflects a decrease in the fuel rate to $2.50. Unlike in prior years, this transportation budget does not include any operating or maintenance fee or rate increases. For operation of plants, we have a request of $17.5 million for FY '22 or an overall increase of $503,922 or a 2.9% increase to support the negotiated agreement, as well as utility cost increases. We also have included in the operations budget a planned use of fund balance of $78,850 for new vehicles. The maintenance of plant budget requested is $4.3 million, which reflects an overall decrease of $230,049 or a 5% increase. Funding is included for negotiations. However, we have removed all planned painting from this budget, as well as reflecting an overall decrease in their operating cost of 10%. The fixed charges category totals $54.7 million or an overall increase of $2,075,951 for a 3.9% increase net of the planned use of fund balance in FY '21. And this increase includes increases associated with social security, pension increase, health insurance increase. We factored in 5% estimated increase. However, as in prior years, we don't anticipate getting that actual amount until late February, early March. And we've included increases associated with the general liability and workers' compensation insurance. The capital outlay budget totals $815,000, reflecting a requested increase of $19,557 or 2.5% increase to support funding for negotiations. And we've also included $150,000 planned use of fund balance to support the legal modifications. So next dates, at your next meeting, we'll walk through each individual category and address any questions that you have. That is December 16th for the budget work session. On January 6th, the Board of Education public hearing. On January 13th, Board of Education budget work session. And finally, on January 27th, your budget approval. So it can be submitted to the county commissioners for consideration. Are there any questions at this time?
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
No questions.
Mary, Nagina?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay.
So we'll say this was one of the most straightforward budgets that we're ever going to present. We have asked staff to strip out anything that they possibly can. They've been very, they've really been diligent in going through to reduce the overall costs of operations by about 10%. Everything that's in there is really relative to taking care of our people. We believe that in the middle of a pandemic, as we're facing the greatest crisis that public education has ever faced in the United States, this is a really good time to make sure that we adhere to and uphold what we have promised our people. So, and that is, and that's the cost associated with it. So the good news is, I think we're going to be able to move pretty quickly through all of this and get this over to the county commissioners so that we can engage in a really productive conversation about how we take care of people in St. Mary's County. And with that.
Jim?
This is Jim Davis. Dr. Walker yesterday was mentioning about the enrollment down 414 students and explained that many of the reductions was in the, in K and first, second grade. My question is, is there any way of tying the population of the county to the reduced enrollment of the schools? Do we have any data at all, at all on the number of high school or elementary school age students?
So, so like census data, you mean?
Yeah, census data.
So, so Jim, what I think, what I think is probably happening just from people that I know, if you are a parent who has someone in that K through three, it's incredibly difficult for them to be online. Some of them, you know, you know, kindergarten, first, second grade, you're, you're learning to read, you know, different, there's different challenges that are coming up. So as parents are working from home, I think it is much easier for them to enter into a homeschool program that perhaps is not as time-consuming as what the, what our program is. So I think what Scott and Dr. Walker were alluding to yesterday is that there hasn't been a mass exodus of families or home sales in St. Mary's County. The parents, for whatever reason, have removed their children from the elementary school programs just because it, it might be easier on their home life and for the need of the student to be in a homeschool or a private school situation. So it doesn't mean that they're never going to come back. It just means that, you know, during this time, they have more control over their student's education in-house or homeschool than they do, you know, or feel as if they do than if they're, they're in one of our programs. So there, I don't think there's been any data or anything anywhere to suggest that we have had large amounts of people that have left the county and taken their families with them. And I don't think there's been a lot of turnover at the Navy base either just because of the pandemic. And they aren't moving people from duty stations as they usually do on a, you know, outside of, you know, the restrictions that are placed on travel right now.
The, the other leading data would be the data that we probably look to our county commissioners for and which will be coming out in the next several weeks. Income data, taxable income data, and property sales and property tax. Both of those things seem to be going quite strong. What Dr. Walker alluded to and what we've been discussing in-house is that we think there may be quite a wave of kids who come back to school and even additional kids that come to school later this year as we reopen. And next year, as if the, so the one thing that we do see is when the economy, if the economy actually does start to do a downturn in St. Mary's County, one of the things that people move away from are private and parochial educational experiences that, that cost them out of pocket. And they, and so the more challenged the economy, usually the more children we see enrolled in public schools. So we could get it, we could be ending up with a double whammy and, and have 700 kids return next year.
Well, and the second, the second thing too is, I mean, for some of my friends that have moved their children to homeschool, if they're working from home, you know, if they have, if they typically have a job outside of the home, they're working from home. The homeschool programs are not, some of them are not nearly as time-consuming online as what SMCPS is. So it's easier for the parent to manage their work balance for their paying job and their child's schooling at the same time if you're in a homeschool program. But once that, those businesses open up and they have to go back to work, they can't leave their child at home in a homeschool situation. So therefore, you know, the assumption is that then they would re-enroll them in the traditional elementary school, brick and mortar, because they will also have to go back to work themselves. So I think, I think that's probably also some of what we're seeing because the homeschool programs, you know, your, your day is not quite as structured as what we have.
Before the pandemic, we had almost 1,000 kids in, in St. Mary's County in home instruction. So I would imagine that now we probably have about 1,300 or 1,400 students in home instruction in St. Mary's County. And we, and, and Mr. Davis, to your point, we do track all of this. So we know where every, every child that left us, we know where they went because they, they, we needed to send them educational records. All the kindergartners are the only kind of unknown. But I, but we believe that those, those kids will be coming back to us as well. Because I, I, I don't, I think we have one of the best kindergarten programs, you know, certainly in, in the, in the state.
And well, and unless you're a full-day kindergarten, we don't necessarily receive per pupil funding for you either.
Pre-K.
Pre-K, right, pre-K, right.
So, so we, we're in a, we're in a really weird space here. And this will be a time where either we, hopefully, we will all be working together and pulling together to get us through this year and, and get us back to, back to normalcy. The budget proposed really is, is just about honoring our commitment to staff. And everything else has been stripped out of it.
Anything else? Anyone?
Nope. All right.
Okay, with, okay, so with that peg, if you can put the dates of the items on the board calendar so everyone has them, then our budget work session is going to be, we have a board meeting on December 16th, which will then also include a budget work session as well. So Mary and Jim, your books are in the back room. If you guys want to pick them up so you can study and learn over the next two weeks, that would be great. And we are adjourned.